All right, good evening. This is the April 2nd, 2025 Cottage Grove City Council meeting, which I am calling to order. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, will the clerk please do the roll?
Councilmember Claussen.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Councilmember Thede.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Mayor Bailey.
Here. Next on our agenda is open forum. This is the opportunity for anybody that wants to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda is welcome to do it. We did have a sign up sheet out in the entryway, and we do have one person that did sign up, and we just asked everybody, after that, I'll see if there's anybody else who wants to speak, let's just keep it to three minutes. So Bonnie Madder, if you want to just come up and state your name and address for the record.
Good to see ya. Bonnie Madder, 6649 in Skip Avenue, South Cottage Grove. Hello, Mayor and council members. Thank you very much. I'm here tonight because I attended the March 24th Planning Commission meeting, and at that meeting, we were told that the Planning Commission would no longer be hearing environmental assessment worksheets or environmental impact statements. And I was very concerned when I heard that. I think that, that, that these type, this type of information is very important, not only for the community, but for the residents. It helps protect the community and the residents. So what I would like to know is, who made that decision? When was the decision made? Where was the discussion held? Who was in the room when the decision was made? And what are the reasons for not keeping the Planning Commission involved in the environmental assessment process? Thank you.
All right, thank you. So Steph, you've got that? Okay. All right, was, now, no one else did sign up? Oh, did you want, they'll have to, I don't know, Jennifer, you want to speak or just, you'll just get back? Okay, we'll get back to you then.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And I didn't see anybody else that had signed up out there in the entryway, and just in case somebody came in, is there anybody else that wants to speak on open forum this evening? All right, seeing none, I will go ahead and close open forum, and we'll move to number five, which is adoption of the agenda.
Move the agenda.
Say it.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Thede, second by Councilmember Olson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number six is presentations. We do have two presentations this evening, and, and both of them are proclamations. And so the first one, A is World Autism Month proclamation, and I have asked Councilmember Olson to read that proclamation, and then once we're done, I'll look for a motion, and the second we approve.
Thank you, Mayor. You are correct. April is always World Autism Month, and it's always an honor for me to be able to read this proclamation from the city of Cottage Grove, as it's an issue that's very near and dear to my family, with my son being on the autism spectrum, and I'm grateful for the opportunity. The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas the city of Cottage Grove recognizes the importance of fostering a community that embraces diversity, inclusion, and understanding; and whereas World Autism Month begins with World Autism Awareness Day on April 2nd, which happens to be today, and provides an opportunity to raise awareness about autism or autism spectrum disorder known as ASD, celebrate the unique contributions of individuals on the autism spectrum, and promote acceptance; and whereas the city of Cottage Grove acknowledges the need to support, empower, and uplift people with ASD, their families, and caregivers; and whereas World Autism Month provides an opportunity to celebrate the unique contributions of individuals on the autism spectrum and their families; and whereas the city of Cottage Grove commits to creating an environment where everyone, regardless of neurodiversity, feels valued, respected, and included; and whereas we celebrate the strengths, talents, and perspectives of autistic individuals which enrich our community and contribute to its vibrancy. Now therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Cottage Grove, County of Washington, State of Minnesota hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 to be designated as World Autism Month, passed this Wednesday, the second day of April 2025, and signed by Myron Bailey, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Olson, for reading that proclamation, always an important one that we have every year, and that we like to recognize within our community. So with that, I'll look for, do you want to make that motion?
I would.
Accept it?
I will make the motion to accept the proclamation that is declaring April 2025 World Autism Month.
Thank you, Councilmember Olson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for doing that. And then our next proclamation is, which is a big one also, and always in April, is National Volunteer Month, and I've asked Councilmember Claussen to do that proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. As a matter of fact, our volunteer banquet is coming up.
Yep.
April 17th. There's a lot of volunteers, I mean, volunteers run in many organizations, I mean, just think of the food salves, the churches, in our own city, all our commissioners are, all volunteers. So I'm happy to read this, this proclamation for National Volunteer Month. Whereas the contributions of volunteers enrich Cottage Grove and the lives of our fellow community members; and whereas volunteers play an essential role in our community dedicating their time, talents, passion, to make a positive impact; and whereas their commitment to serve inspires us all to create better, more connected, and vibrant city; and whereas the National Volunteer Month provides an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the invaluable contributions of volunteers; and whereas these dedicated individuals enhance the quality of life for all our residents by fostering community connections and promoting civic engagement; and whereas we recognize that even small acts of kindness can have a profound impact on our community's well-being and future generations; and whereas during National Volunteer Month, we honor those who generously give their time, talents, and passion to make a difference; and whereas we extend our deepest appreciation to all volunteers who contribute to the well-being of our city and its residents. Now therefore, the mayor, the city council, and city of Cottage Grove, County of Washington, State of Minnesota hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 to be designated as National Volunteer Month, passed this Wednesday, the second day of April 2025. Fantastic.
Thank you, Councilmember Claussen, and once again, we all truly appreciate all the volunteers, whether they're commissions, as that was brought up a little bit earlier during open forum, or just somebody that's picking up trash, or there's a gentleman that's waving at cars as they're passing by North Square, so, very, very, very cool. So, Councilmember Claussen, would you like to make the motion on this one?
I move to adopt April 2025 as National Volunteer Month.
Thank you.
Second.
And so we have a motion by Councilmember Claussen, second by Councilmember Thede. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you both for doing that. Next on our agenda is consent. Council, is there anything you want to pull off of consent for extra discussion tonight? I didn't see anybody or hear anybody, so at this point, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve consent.
Approve consent.
All right.
Motion to approve consent.
You got it. So we have a motion by Councilmember Thede, I believe, Councilmember Garza, you did a second, okay. Any other further discussions before we move on? All right, all those in favor then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number eight, as we continue, oh, I should mention, anybody that was here for anything, I know you're back there, on, on the consent calendar have all been approved. Thank you. So next is approved disbursement, eight A's to pay the bills.
Move the bills.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Olson, and second by Councilmember Claussen. No other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We're moving right along here. All right, nine is public hearings. We do have a, a public hearing this evening. We've got Hawthorne Pines, second addition, which is an easement vacation and boundary line adjustment. Looks fairly simple, so to speak, and Emily Schmitz, our community development director, is going to take us through this.
Mayor, council, good evening. Yes, hopefully quite simple. Hawthorne Pines is that development up in the northwest corner of our community off of 65th. Polte has been working in there for a handful of years. They've come across this very unique situation where a lot line needs to be tweaked just a bit to ensure that we're maintaining that 15 feet total between our buildings on each lot line. So as you can see, new lot line is shifted about two and a half feet. In order to do that, we do also need to vacate that standard DNU easement that we have on either side of our property lines, so that we can shift that, and then of course enact a new DNU easement on either side of that new property line. So that would be a paper easement, but exists nonetheless and do serve the same purpose. So with that, I will leave the recommendation before you to hold that public hearing, and then it is two separate recommendations this evening.
All right, sounds good. Council, any questions on this? Okay, so I'll go ahead and, this is a public hearing, so if there's anybody who wants to speak on this item, is welcome to do so. Anybody at all? All right, seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing, and council, be motion number two on the screen.
I would move that we approve Resolution 2025-046, approving the boundary line adjustment and the drainage and utility easement as proposed on lots three and four block four Hawthorne Pines, second addition.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Thede, do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Garza. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Emily. Now we're going to move on to 10, which is bid awards. We have two this evening. The first one is the High Zone Raw Water Main Project. I got to get that out of my mouth a little bit, and our public works director, Ryan Burfine, is going to take us through this one.
Mayor, I think there was one issue with that. We didn't actually vacate and rescind the original one before we
Not only for the community, but for the residents. It helps protect the community and the residents. So what I would like to know is, uh, who made that decision? When was the decision made? Where was the discussion held? Who was in the room when the decision was made? And what are the reasons for not keeping the planning commission involved in the environmental assessment process? Thank you.
All right, thank you. So staff, you've got that? Okay. All right, uh, was, now, no one else did sign up? Oh, did you want, they'll have to, I, I don't know. Jennifer, you want to speak or just, you'll just get back? Okay, we'll get back to you then.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And I didn't see anybody else that had signed up out there in the anchorage. And just in case somebody came in, is there anybody else that wants to speak on open forum this evening? All right, seeing none, I will go ahead and close open forum and we'll move to number five, which is adoption of the agenda.
Move the agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by council member Thede, second by council member Olson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number six is presentations. Uh, we do have two presentations this evening and, and both of them are proclamations. Um, and so the first one, uh, A is World Autism Month proclamation. And I have asked, um, uh, council member Olson to, uh, read that proclamation. And then once we're done, I'll look for a motion and the second will approve.
Thank you, Mayor. You are correct. April, uh, is always, uh, World Autism Month. And it's always an honor for me to be able to read this proclamation from the city of Cottage Grove, uh, as it's a, uh, issue that's very near and dear to my family with my son being on the autism spectrum. And I'm grateful for the opportunity. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the city of Cottage Grove recognizes the importance of fostering a community that embraces diversity, inclusion, and understanding. And whereas World Autism Month begins with World Autism Awareness Day on April 2nd, which happens to be today. And provides an opportunity to raise awareness about autism or autism spectrum disorder known as ASD. Celebrate the unique contributions of individuals on the autism spectrum and promote acceptance. And whereas the city of Cottage Grove acknowledges the need to support, empower, and uplift people with ASD, their families and caregivers. And whereas World Autism Month provides an opportunity to celebrate the unique contributions of individuals on the autism spectrum and their families. And whereas the city of Cottage Grove commits to creating an environment where everyone, regardless of neurodiversity, feels valued, respected, and included. And whereas we celebrate the strengths, talents, and perspectives of autistic individuals which enrich our community and contribute to its vibrancy. Now therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Cottage Grove, county of Washington, state of Minnesota hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 to be designated as World Autism Month, passed this Wednesday, the second day of April 2025, and signed by Myron Bailey, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you, council member Olson, for, uh, reading that proclamation. Always an important one that we have every year, um, and that we like to recognize within our community. Uh, so with that, I'll look for, um, do you want to make that motion?
I would.
Accept it?
I will make the motion to accept the proclamation that is, uh, declaring April 2025 World Autism Month.
Thank you, council member Olson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by council member Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for doing that. Um, and then our next proclamation is, uh, which is a big one also, and, uh, always in April, is National Volunteer Month. And, uh, I've asked council member McClosson to, uh, do that proclamation.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. As a matter of fact, our volunteer banquet is coming up, uh, April 17th. Um, there's a lot of volunteers, I mean, volunteers run in, uh, many organizations. I mean, just think of the food shelves, the churches, in our own city, all our commissioners are, all, all volunteers. So I'm happy to read this, uh, this proclamation for National Volunteer Month. Uh, whereas the contributions of volunteers enrich Cottage Grove and the lives of our fellow community members. And whereas volunteers play an essential role in our community dedicating their time, talents, passion to make a positive impact. And whereas their commitment to serve inspires us all to create better, more connected, and vibrant city. And whereas the National Volunteer Month provides an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the, the invaluable contributions of volunteers. And whereas these dedicated individuals enhance the quality of life for all our residents by fostering community connections and promoting civic engagement. And whereas we recognize that even small acts of kindness can have a profound impact on our community's well-being and future generations. And whereas during National Volunteer Month, we honor those who generously give their time, talents, and passion to make a difference. And whereas we extend our deepest appreciation to all volunteers who contribute to the well-being of our city and its residents. Now therefore, the mayor, the city council, and city of, uh, city of Cottage Grove, county of Washington, state of Minnesota hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 to be designated as National Volunteer Month, passed this Wednesday, the second day of April 2025.
Fantastic. Thank you, uh, council member McClosson. And, uh, once again, we all truly appreciate all the volunteers, uh, whether they're commissions, as that was brought up a little bit earlier during, uh, open forum, or, um, just somebody that's picking up trash, or there's a gentleman that's waving at, uh, cars as they're passing by, uh, North Square. So, uh, very, very, uh, very cool. So, uh, council member McClosson, would you like to make the motion on this one?
I move to adopt April 2025 as National Volunteer Month.
Thank you.
Second.
And second, so we have a motion by council member McClosson, second by council member Thede. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, thank you both for doing that. Uh, next on our agenda is consent. Uh, council, is there anything you want to pull off of consent for extra discussion tonight? I didn't see anybody or hear anybody, so at this point, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve consent.
Approve consent.
All right.
Motion to approve consent.
You got it. So we have a motion by council member Thede. I believe council member Garza, you did a second? Okay. Any other further discussions before we move on? All right, all those in favor then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, number eight, as we continue, oh, I should mention, anybody that was here for anything, I know you, you're back there, uh, on, uh, on the consent calendar have all been approved. Thank you. Um, so, and next is approved disbursement, eight A's to pay the bills.
Move the bills.
All right, we have a motion by council member Olson and second by council member McClosson. No other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We're moving right along here. All right, nine is public hearings. We do have a, a public hearing this evening. We've got Hawthorne Pines, second addition, uh, which is an easement vacation and boundary line adjustment. Looks fairly simple, so to speak. And Emily Schmitz, our community development director, is going to take us through this.
Mayor, council, good evening. Yes, hopefully quite simple. Uh, Hawthorne Pines is that development up in the northwest corner of our community, uh, off of 65th. Polte has been working in there for a handful of years. Uh, they've come across this very unique situation where a lot line needs to be tweaked just a bit to ensure that we're maintaining that 15 feet total, uh, between our buildings on each lot line. So as you can see, uh, new lot line is shifted about two and a half feet. In order to do that, we do also need to vacate that standard DNU easement that we have on either side of our property lines so that we can shift that. And then, of course, enact a new DNU easement, uh, on either side of that, uh, new property line. So that would be a paper easement, uh, but exists nonetheless and do, serve the same purpose. So with that, I will leave the recommendation before you to hold that public hearing, and then it is two separate recommendations this evening.
All right, sounds good. Uh, council, any questions on this? Okay. Um, so I'll go ahead and, this is a public hearing, so if there's anybody who wants to speak on this item, is welcome to do so. Anybody at all? All right, seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And council, uh, it'd be motion number two on the screen.
I would move that we approve resolution 2025-046, approving the boundary line adjustment and the drainage and utility easement as proposed on lots three and four block four Hawthorne Pines, second addition.
All right, so we have a motion by council member Thede. Do I have a second? Second by council member Garza. Uh, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Emily. Uh, now we're going to move on to 10, which is bid awards. Uh, we have two this evening. The first one is the High Zone Raw Water Main Project. Uh, gotta get that out of my mouth a little bit. And our public works director, Ryan Burfine, is going to take us through this one.
Mayor, I think there was one issue with that. We didn't actually vacate and rescind the original one before we adopted the new placement. Uh, so you need to adopt resolution 2025-45. You only did 46.
Mayor, I'll move to adopt resolution 2025-045, vacating, rescinding, terminating, and releasing certain easements pertaining to real property within the city of Cottage Grove.
All right, so we have, do have a motion on this one. I apologize for that. Uh, for council member Olson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by council member McClosson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'll just have to mention to staff, break it into three. Cause I saw it said A was hold a public hearing. I just want to mention that, so. Okay. Now we're on to, uh, Ryan Burfine, our public works director for a High Zone Raw Water Main Project.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So we did take bids, uh, for this project, uh, March 20th, Thursday, a couple of weeks ago. And just for a quick reminder and overview, this is a 3M settlement project. That's going to install a new water main, um, across the northern part of the city, down to where our intermediate zone water treatment plant's going to be. So it's going to connect well 11, which is at Highlands Park across from the splash pad, and then well 12, which is up in Sunny Hill Park, up in the Pine Cliff neighborhood. So largely, it'll be a 16-inch water main. We call it a raw water main because it's going to have that untreated water from wells 11 and 12 routed down to the new treatment plant. And then it'll get pumped back up to this area of the city. Um, like I said, it is, you know, nearly all funded through, uh, the 3M settlement project. Um, in the memo, there was a small amount of funds that'll be city because they're not relevant to the 3M settlement part. Um, we, uh, with this project, uh, the trail in Pine Tree Valley is going to get torn up, um, but not the little connectors to the neighborhoods. But we do want those to be replaced as well. So that's a city cost. Uh, we have dedicated funding for that. Um, we also have some sanitary sewer lining that we'd like to have done because there's some sanitary sewer lining necessary for the High Zone Raw Water Main. So while we have the contractor, let's not pay the additional MOB charges. Let's get the, that lining done, and that's paid for the sanitary sewer utility fund. Then there's a little bit of oversizing that's not settlement eligible for a future well, uh, really close to the plant itself. Um, that's paid for out of the water area fund, so that is in the, the memo for the council. When we took bids, uh, we had, uh, actually five companies, uh, bid on the project. You can see all five were under the engineer's estimate, um, which it's, it's good to be well under, obviously. It was a little surprising to have all five under. I will say, in terms of the estimate, that was based on real numbers. Um, with our, our consultant, S E H, uh, they're doing some other similar projects for the 3M settlement, like in Woodbury, some other communities that took bids actually earlier this winter. Um, and that's actually what a lot of this was based off of, and we actually saw much more favorable bids. So, um, uh, I guess, I don't know if it was tariff concerns back then that alleviated when we bid. It's hard to explain, but with the pretty tight bidding, we don't have concerns that there was things missed by the low bidder, um, or any issues like that. So we are comfortable with the bids. And A1 Excavating, um, they've done work, um, as a sub on some other projects in town. They also were the general contractor, prime contractor when we extended the water main to the Granada Avenue neighborhood in 2020. So we do have direct work experience with them, um, as well. So we're comfortable with that, uh, with that. Uh, recommendations on the screen, and I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. Uh, council, any questions for Ryan on this topic? Okay, I guess, uh, none on that one, Ryan. So, uh, council, the resolution, who would like to take it on the screen?
Uh, adopt, I'd like to, um, adopt resolution 2025-039, awarding the High Zone Raw Water Main Project to A1 Excavating LLC in the amount of $5,134,648.
All right, so we have a motion by council member Garza, second by council member Thede. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, and then, uh, B is the 2025 Mill and Overlay Bid Award. And Ryan, that's you too.
That is, uh, Mayor, members of the council, so this one we took bids on, uh, last Thursday, uh, March 27th. Um, and just as a reminder again, on this project, uh, two scopes to it, part of it's the Mill and Overlay, which will be Hardwood Avenue from 80th to 70th. You can see there's a little section, uh, by the new apartments that's left out. That was Mill and overlaid when the turn lanes were installed just a few years ago, so that's not necessary to redo that work. So there's a little gap left out on Hardwood. Um, we also did in purple with the base bid, um, a lot of the, the Timber Ridge neighborhood north of 70th Street. And then, you know, not, we always like with these Mill and overlays, we have a dedicated funding source with the roadway maintenance funds. We like to make sure we're maximizing that. So we like to have an alternate that if we do get good pricing, we can award it because we have that dedicated funding for this work. That was in green, the Pine Arbor, uh, neighborhood. There's also the, the new signal at Hardwood Court, um, that, um, I know there was some discussion, uh, when we authorized bids, just talking about, you know, why that's going in. We're anticipating, you know, more growth, more development and redevelopment in that area. So that is to manage that growth. Also, a lot of the signal justification was actually the sightlines. And as traffic has increased over the years, there's actually a higher, a higher accident rate at that intersection above what you'd expect at that similar intersection in the statewide average. So that also went into that justification. And we did a lot of very close review, detailed review to make sure we're not creating a new East Point in Jamaica. I think it can feel like those intersections at 80th and Hardwood Court are really close, um, but it is actually about double the distance with half the traffic level. We looked out at full build out of the city with actually higher intense uses than we'd maybe ever see. And even with that, we didn't have stacking issues. So just want council to be aware, that was a big effort to make sure that these signals are going to work really well together. Um, in terms of the bid results, uh, if council members with the pavement management project, we saw asphalt pricing quite a bit lower than what, uh, the suppliers were anticipating. When we estimate these asphalt projects, um, our team does a lot of work with the suppliers over the winter, what's pricing going to look like in the coming season? Um, and it's, it's just quite a bit lower than what we were hearing back then. We saw that on pavement management. Uh, we saw that again here with our bidding. You can see we had five bids, uh, probably looks like a very similar, uh, contractors that we had in the pavement management project. It is a different low bid for this project, Northwest Asphalt Incorporated. Um, they've done many projects throughout the years in Cottage Grove, um, on our pavement managements, on our Mill and overlays. So very comfortable with their work and with the good bids, um, for the base bid and alternate. We are recommending, awarding the alternate tonight as well, so we can make sure we're maximizing those Mill and Overlay funds, uh, for 2025. And with that, the recommendations on the screen.
Okay. I have one question, but council, do you have a question? So I'll start with you and then, uh, council member Garza.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Just a quick question on the signal that's going in down there. So is that in anticipation of, one, the apartments and then the other, excuse me, builds that we're going to be doing down that way too?
Uh, yep, that's correct, Mr. Mayor and council member Garza. So we do look at all the pending development and potential redevelopment when we do that signal justification.
Now, will that signal be on like right away, uh, soon as you, like, is it going to be installed in the next, like, few months and then?
Yep. So in terms of, uh, schedule, um, there's a little bit of lead time on those. So what's nice about this intersection, there's not a lot of reconstruction. If you remember, like, 95th and Jamaica, we had to do a lot of work. Here, it's pretty much just putting the signals up. But there is quite a lead time, so it could be more, you know, into the fall. Uh, once we get the contractor on board, they'll give us a hard schedule. Um, so all that Mill and Overlay work, everything will be done, and they'll pour like the bases, do all the pad ramps, and then once the signals arrive, they'll put those up. And it'll stay operating the same way it does now as a side stop intersection until the signals are here.
Okay, thank you. I just, I wondered if, um, that would cause a delay for traffic for people that would be going down that road and there's not as much traffic just yet, so.
No, that, that's a good question, council member Garza. So we actually, because it is a signal, we can time it accordingly. Um, so, you know, the, the timing now will probably be a little more based on Hardwood. Um, and then, you know, as things redevelop, change, we always actually, every year, um, analyze our signals and look at the timing, and should we tweak it based on new traffic patterns, new development.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So two questions, which is a little piggyback on what you just mentioned. So I know eventually we're going to redo 80th Street, right? When you do that with this other new, uh, uh, signal system that's going in there, will that be kind of incorporated, if you will, into whatever the signal at 80th is doing? So it's kind of a through process, if you know what I mean? So there's not as much staffing, especially if there's redevelopment in there?
Yep, that's correct, uh, Mr. Mayor. So we will, uh, in the 80th Street project, we'll redo Hardwood and, uh, 80th Street. We're putting dual lefts in.
Yep.
And then they will be connected, so they'll be timed together. Um, so that way they can make sure traffic's continuing to flow and further just make sure we're not having any issues between the two signals.
Okay. And then my only other question now is, I know what it is and I'll, I'll say it. So when you were doing, showing the picture of the area that we're going to do, there's obviously a portion of Hardwood that is not done. And I know that it's not done because, or not going to be done because it got redone when the whole, with the apartments going in there. Do you have any concern with a thump or something? You know what I'm saying? Where it's not going to be smooth? Yeah, I mean, which? I just, yeah. I just want to make sure it's a smooth, because I know we had them replace it, remember? Because they, when they first put the one in, there was the, like, yeah, it wasn't good at all, but.
The fact that you got trucks working on both sides of them and doing work and everything else, whether it will actually damage any of that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it's going to be a smooth transition with that gap in the middle, so. I don't.
Nope, that's a good question, Mr. Mayor. So, um, you're right, when, uh, when it was first done, it was actually two different, uh, paving companies with the two different projects in a smaller apartment did not meet our standards. And not just at the transition, but the entire thing. So that was redone, and actually, we actually had, in my first time, pull a letter of credit, redo it with our own contractor, so it's much better. You're right, at the transition points, we do have standards that they have to meet to make sure there's not that thump, uh, when we, when we do meet. I will admit, we did discuss, you know, the, the benefits versus the cons of just milling right through it. Um, but given what that extra cost would have been, um, it really felt better used on roads that needed the Mill Overlay. And then just really making sure we're working with our contractor to have a correct, smooth transition when we're all done.
I, I guess, oh.
Uh, I'll go to council member Olson then, you.
Okay.
I think, okay, council member.
Just real quick, so, so is there, is there something in the, in the proposal that, that, uh, requires make sure that the contractor doesn't degrade that portion? Like, having, all of a sudden having grooves where, where water will sit?
Or even matching, so that, I mean, it's a parkway, so when you're driving along, you want to keep the, um, the look of it.
Yep, uh, so two, for both those questions. One, drainage, no concerns about, uh, the amount of traffic that, that that road gets loaded with on a daily basis, um, the little bit of their trucks driving over, no concerns with rutting or anything like that.
Okay.
Because it is a arterial roadway, very thick pavement mat. But the transition, that's 100% what we have to work with them on. Anytime we have a project, that's something we look at. But, um, even though it feels different, if you think about like in East Point in Jamaica, that project had like 13 different phases with 13 different, uh, paving efforts. And I think I would say, you drive through there and I don't think you notice. Um, so even though that was all done within two years, it really is very similar. So we want to just work and have that same effort. And that is clear in our spec and how tight they have to be with the transition.
Perfect. Uh, council member Olson, that's all.
Thank you. First of all, congratulations on the bidding environment. It's nice for us to be able to get ahead a little bit. As you know, I'm a huge fan of the, the Mill and Overlay. My neighborhood was the first one to get done, and, uh, it is still just fantastic. Uh, it, it's such a great program, particularly because we don't have to assess anybody. So I'm really grateful that we got a favorable bidding environment this year and that, uh, we're able to do some additional areas, uh, as a alternate. My question for you is this, in terms of the communication with the residents in Pine Arbor, have we kind of thought through a communication plan for those folks? Because it's a little different when you're in the neighborhood versus just on Hardwood. Um, you know, finding alternate parking for them for that period of time, et cetera. I mean, these guys tend to work pretty quick. But I'm just wondering if, if we've already kind of put a communication plan together, if we're, if we're working on that.
Yep, uh, Mr. Mayor, council member Olson. So each year at the Mill and Overlay, we've developed, I think, a really nice detailed flyer, um, that we do. Uh, for these, we actually traditionally haven't done like a neighborhood meeting because it is, in general, such a low impact because we're not getting down to the gravel base. It's really quick. They mill out one day and then just a little bit later. Because we're not doing concrete curb repair, things like that. Um, so we are prepped and ready. We wanted to get bids, see what it would be. And after tonight, we'll send that, that mailing out that shows, it's a nice front and back sheet. It's got the project website info, our inspector contact information on there. So that's ready to go and, and go out to the entire project area. We have a little bit extra information, um, for the folks at the signal, just so they have a little more details on what's happening with the signal as well.
You know, and, and for whatever it's worth, um, you know, we, uh, we visit that neighborhood often during night to night, uh, each year, and just a tremendous, um, level of support for the city and, and what have you. But, uh, one item of note is that, uh, we do have, you know, some snowbirds there and, um, you know, retirees who maybe travel extensively, they may take long trips and stuff. So if we can just put that little extra ounce of effort into the communication piece, I think they would appreciate it.
Yep, certainly.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, Ryan. You're more on that than you thought, I think.
No, it's all good.
It's all good, though.
All good.
All right, so I'll look, uh, for a motion in a second on the recommendation on the screen.
Mayor, I'll move resolution 2025-052, awarding the 2025 Mill and Overlay and Hardwood Court intersection improvements to Northwest Asphalt, Inc., for the base bid amount plus the alternate for a total of $1,845,575 and the all-important 90 cents.
There we go.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by council member Olson, second by council, council member Garza. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ryan. Thank you. All right, uh, next we are going to go on to our regular agenda. We do have one item here. Uh, A on our regular agenda is QuickTrip, which is the conditional use permit, site plan review, and variance. And Samantha Parrott, uh, our senior planner, is going to take us through this, so, uh, welcome.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. All right, let's get this on here. So, QuickTrip has applied for a conditional use permit, site plan review, and one variance for a property at the intersection of Jamaica and 95th Street. The property is currently zoned I-1, which is general industrial, and they are proposing to do a convenience store with a traditional fuel canopy and a commercial diesel canopy. The proposed site does comply with all of our city zoning code items, including setbacks, height restrictions, architectural materials, and landscaping requirements, as well as parking requirements. The applicant anticipates hiring 25 to 30 new employees to operate the store 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The site will be accessed via three driveways off of 95th Street. These will provide access for larger trucks and traditional passenger vehicles. Access will also be retained to the city's compost site, currently operated by Rumka through the applicant's property, and an agreement for that is included in your packet for approval tonight. A right turn lane will also be installed on 95th Street to facilitate traffic moving to northbound Jamaica Avenue. The applicant has also applied for one variance for a zero lot line setback for their parking slash driving lane to be 22 feet long, 800, 22 feet wide, 300 feet long, onto city-owned property to the east. There is also a agreement in the packet for this encroachment as well for your consideration this evening. The variance was requested due to the restricted buildable area on the site, the required driveway setbacks and driveway widths to accommodate those larger trucks coming in and out. And it should also be noted that three overhead light poles will also be installed in that encroachment. So with all of that, it is, there are three recommendations on the screen for your consideration tonight, and I will stand for any questions.
All right, counsel, any questions for Samantha here? All right, thank you. Is there anybody in the audience from QuickTrip? Did you have anything you would like to add?
No.
You're all good? Okay, all right. So counsel, I guess we can kind of go down the list here. We have three separate motions that need to be adopted. Who would like to take the first?
I will move that we adopt Resolution 2025-043 to approve the conditional use permit for a QuickTrip convenience store to be located at 95th Street South.
All right, so a motion by Councilmember Berthidi, seconded by Councilmember McClosson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Who would like to do number two?
I'll take two. I'll adopt Resolution 2025-042, approving site plan review and variance to the minimum side yard setback for a parking area and drive lanes.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Garza. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Berthidi. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Number three?
Do the last one.
You can do it.
I approve the move to approve the development agreement with QuickTrip Incorporated and authorize execution of all agreements required for the project as outlined in the development agreement.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember McClosson, second by Councilmember Olson. Any questions on this one? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. So we're finally on our way. Now, I will ask one question now that we're done with that. Timing. Have you heard anything yet? If you want to come up and share with us, I know our public has been.
It is a very, very hot topic in town.
I realize that. Lisa Watson, QuickTrip, 9900 Del Ridge Road, Bloomington, Minnesota. And timing-wise, we don't have it yet. Totally a set-down date. So our Gantt chart moves a lot. Just recently, I just saw some projects move off, and so some more are going to get added on. So I'd like to be able to come back to council when I have a little better idea of when that, what that timing looks like.
Perfect. Yeah, and whether you come back to us or you share it with staff.
Yeah, with staff, yeah.
Yeah, but that would be good, because then we can share it amongst ourselves and let the public know when they're finally going to see you break ground in that new building. So.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So next on our agenda this evening, we're down to council comments or requests, and I will start down here with Councilmember McClosson.
Nothing to add tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Olson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to talk a little bit tonight about a couple of upcoming events that are not on our calendar of upcoming events, so that the public is aware. First of all, our friends at Basic Needs are holding their annual Fashion for a Cause Gala this year on the 10th of April at River Oaks. I believe that starts at 5:00. The event goes to support all of the various charitable contributions that Basic Needs makes to the South Washington County community. But in particular, the Basic Needs food shelf, where people are eligible to come in if they're facing food insecurity. And without any charge at all, they are able to find some healthy food that they can take home to feed themselves and their families. So if you have not already bought a ticket, you can go to the Basic Needs website or their Facebook page, and there's a link right there for you to buy a ticket. Again, April 10, Fashion for a Cause. That is at River Oaks, starting at 5:00. Additionally, we're getting to that time of year where the Easter Bunny is going to come visit Cottage Grove. And our Cottage Grove Lions Club, as we do each year, will be holding our Easter Bunny breakfast at the Cottage Grove VFW. That will be on April 13, from 8:00 a.m. to noon. The cost to attend is $12 for adults, $8 for kids. That includes your meal. You know, we have milk, and we have juice, and we have other coffee and other drinks for people. And we are also going to be giving away several different prizes, including bikes and scooters for the kids. And there's no cost to enter. When you pay your $8 fee for your child, they are automatically entered into the drawing for the bikes and the scooters. So come enjoy a little bit of breakfast and a lot of fun with the Easter Bunny. You can get your picture taken with the bunny if you'd like. Again, April 13 at the Cottage Grove VFW from 8:00 a.m. to noon. And all proceeds go, of course, to the Cottage Grove Lions, which is a nonprofit that supports various different endeavors throughout the Cottage Grove community and the local area. So we'll look forward to seeing you there. And with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. Councilmember Berthidi?
Yeah, I don't have too much. I'll, as I usually do, I'll mention Strawberry Fest. The next meeting is next Monday, April 7, 6:00 p.m. at Carboni's. We always enjoy having people from the community come in and see what it's all about and see if there's ways they can assist and help out. So.
Fantastic. Obviously, it's hard to believe that's coming up sooner and sooner.
It is, yeah.
It's early April for crying out loud.
I know, right?
So, Councilmember Garza?
Thank you, Mayor. I will give another plug for the Basic Needs Fashion Show. I'm actually walking in the fashion show, so I'm really excited. They have some awesome fashions to be had, and they are very reasonable. They are designer fashions. They just, they have a lot of really great stuff down there. So if you haven't gone to Basic Needs, I'd say get down there and check out their stuff. They have some good stuff. Also, River Oaks is in full swing with their fish fries. We actually had dinner there tonight, and it was amazing. So I would say, if you are looking to have a really spectacular fish fry, get down to River Oaks Friday nights. They suggest making a reservation. It seems like it's getting pretty packed. They're having a full house. So we'd love to see you come and check us out.
The fish entree that we had tonight.
Oh, man. What was the fish?
What was it? I don't remember.
I'm not sure. But we had steak and fish.
It was a white fish.
A white, it was amazing. The new chef down there is really good. So if you haven't had a chance, get down there and eat. But that's all I have.
It's so funny. We're all looking at each other like, it was good, but we don't.
Brazini or Benzini?
What was it?
Brazini.
Brazini?
Bronzini.
Bronzini? Okay. Well, it was very good, and it was on the menu for Friday night.
Bronzini, and it wasn't even brown colored.
No, it was all white.
Bronze, it wasn't bronze at all.
The only item I had for just the general public to share this evening is I had the opportunity today to do our first podcast that you're going to be seeing. So we're always looking for new ways to engage the public. And one of the things that I brought up earlier, like in December, whatever, when Phil joined us, is to do more communication type thing to the public in various means. So today, we taped our first podcast, which obviously will be released in the very near future, and I had the opportunity to be their first guest, if you will. And I say theirs is because Phil and Emily both were there. So it was, we had a great time. It was amazing. I just would share with you, counsel, if you get the invite, or staff, if you get the invite, to be part of it. You're going to love it. It's fun to banter and just talk differently, if you will, and learn about positions, people, you know, some of the questions that were shared with me that I got to, or some of the questions that were sent to me or put to me, I got to answer, and a couple of them were like, what? You did that? So just wanted to make a nice plug that it's going to be cool. So I encourage you to listen to it when it comes, when it does come out. So with that, we do have two workshops this evening, which are both open to the public. The first one, oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. My apologies. I did that wrong. So we have one workshop that's open to the public, that the public can come in. That's Twin Cities Land Development, which is a concept of the tank property in a workshop. And then we do have a closed session right after that, which obviously the public cannot be in. And that is pursuant to Minnesota Statute 113D.05 subsection 3C, to develop offers for the purchase of property. And it's basically a property acquisition possibility that the city is looking at doing. So, and there is a long number in there. Do I need to say the number? It's all good. Okay. So with that, counsel, will, are we heading into the training room first? Okay. So we'll be heading into the training room. Anybody in the audience that wants to sit in is welcome to do so. We'll be adjourning later. Thank you.